I'd like to call to order this October 7th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Will you please call to roll?
Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Dr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Moffett?
Here.
Ms. Schofield?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Item B, Agenda, Motion to Approve the Agenda. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda of the October 7th, 2020, regular Board of Education meeting. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of a consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one singular motion unless a member of the Board of Education, treasurer, or superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call please.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Item C, Opening Ceremony. Welcome. Our vision, Cogafalls City Schools, the hub of our community, committed to a culture of caring. We innovate, we create, we personalize education for all. Our mission, every student, every day, every opportunity. Like to especially welcome all of our top Tigers who are here this evening and the family and friends that are here to support them. Informational items. This meeting is a meeting of the Cogafalls Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not a public community meeting, although there are opportunities for public participation. If an individual wishes to address the Board regarding a topic found on the meeting agenda, the individual must present a registration form found inside the attendance notebook and present it to the treasurer. Following the introduction of the topic by the Board President, followed by Board Discussion, the individual will be recognized. If an individual wishes to address the Board regarding a topic not found on the meeting agenda, she or he must notify the superintendent and/or Board President of the topic no later than seven calendar days in advance of the meeting. The comments of these individuals will be read during the Board Business portion of the agenda. In both cases, comments will include the name and address of the individual and be limited to three minutes. In addition, in public session, the Board will not hear complaints about school personnel nor against any person connected with the school system. An unabridged Board Agenda for this meeting can be found on your electronic device at the address shown on the screen, and for your convenience, hard copies of the Board Agenda may be found on the librarian's desk next to the sign-in book. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Cogafalls Board of Education is on October 21st, 2020, at 5:30 PM in the Cogafalls High School Library, 2304th Street. Item Three, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Item Four, Positive Reflections. Ms. Patrice White?
If you will stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And a positive reflection for tonight. A dull mind gets bored easily; a curious mind expands forever.
Thank you, Ms. White. Item D, Presentations. Item One, Staff Recognition. Dr. Nichols.
Thank you, President Schofield, members of the Board of Education. Welcome to our audience members. We have a couple of staff recognitions that we'd like to share with everyone this evening. We're blessed to have a tremendous staff. And one of the things that we're doing in conjunction with our strategic plan is making sure we recognize publicly our staff on a regular basis. And so with me this evening is Sarah Subatici. Sarah, would you please come up? DeWitt Elementary School, fourth grade teacher, Sarah Subatici, is one of thirty Greater Akron Region Young Professionals Named as Recipients of the Akron Chamber of Commerce's 13th Annual Thirty for the Future Award. The Greater Akron Chambers Thirty for the Future Award honors young professionals ages 25 to 39, whose stellar contributions impact their industries and the Greater Akron Region as a whole. Anna Richards, Greater Akron Chamber Manager of Program and Events, tells us Sarah was selected based on her professional accomplishments, leadership, and community service. Thirty for the Future will honor Sarah's dedication to Cogafalls City Schools and her local community. Sarah expressed her gratitude and appreciation, saying, "I am truly grateful, grateful, and honored to be a recipient of this award for my work in my professional community of Cogafalls and my home community of Barberton." Anyone that knows me would tell you that I am passionate about my job as a teacher and am blessed to work every day in a career that I love. I love coming to work each day at DeWitt with the most wonderful students, families, colleagues, and principal. I am so thankful for so many people who encourage, inspire, and support me on a daily basis. This year's award recipients are being recognized by the Greater Akron Chamber in a week-long virtual celebration in September. Congratulations, Sarah. I have a pin for you, a Black Tiger pin for you, and a certificate. If I may so indulge, the certificate reads, "This certificate is presented to Sarah Subatici in recognition of the professional accomplishment of being selected as a recipient of the Akron Chamber of Commerce's Thirty for the Future Award. The dedication and passion you extend to your students, colleagues, and the Black Tiger community is inspirational and appreciated." Thank you so much. [applause]
Thank you so much. Like I said, it's a true honor to work here and to serve the students in Cogafalls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite our Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Ellen McClure, to the podium to recognize two of our Star Award winners.
Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to have everybody back in person and not watching through a screen. So as Dr. Nichols said, one of our goals this year as a district, as a staff, is to recognize our staff publicly typically, and we have done a Star Award, a Staff Star Award at the end of the year, every year, where we recognized people from different parts of our organization, and we thought, we need to be recognizing these folks more frequently. So they are going to be recognized each time. We have top Tigers, so we will have some staff members come in as well. They are nominated by their colleagues, so they... I'm going to ask Tammy Brown to come on up. She already did. Tammy is the nominator of these two folks, and if I could have Karen Hummel and Angie Hill come on up. So I'm going to read Ms. Brown's nomination. It's a little lengthy, so bear with me. We all know Mrs. Brown's, you know.
Talk about her people.
So here's what she had to say about these two wonderful people. "When I received the new Shining Star application, I knew exactly who was receiving the first nomination. Karen Hummel and Angie Hill have worked since March 13th to meet the needs of our families. When we closed schools last March, the one thing that continued in the buildings was food service. These ladies were here each and every day from March until May to prepare and package meals and help families. They would not only do the preparing of the meals, they would also help carry things to the car, have conversations with families, make sure everyone had everything they needed. On top of breakfast and lunch preparation and distribution, they have... Preston School has donations that come in weekly for dinners, and these ladies are also more than happy to work with those dinners to take care for the families. Karen and Angie not only help the Preston families, they help any and all Black Tiger families that come through the doors. I have heard on more than one occasion that people come to Preston because these ladies are so friendly and helpful. They show Black Tiger pride every day. Information on the Summit County Health Department website reminds us that eating nutritious food is an important part of a healthy lifestyle. They also provide a mountain of research, which suggests that healthy nutrition radically improves children's cognitive functions and measurable academic achievements. These ladies are essential members of the team that helps meet the nutritional needs of our students. They are giving them a healthy foundation so learning can begin. This past week, which would have been earlier in the school year, they prepared 902 meals to be ready for Monday distribution and handed out 848 meals in one day. These women are superheroes, and we all appreciate them so much. They work tirelessly to meet a basic need for our students, which helps them to be ready to receive the instruction for the day. The CDC reports that eating a healthy diet and being physically active not only will improve the health of students, but also improve their academic achievement. Thanks to these ladies, our students have one step taken care of. Thank you so much."
Thank you.
[applause] They are also receiving certificates and Black Tiger pins. They will also be receiving a special Star Award. Unfortunately, they just haven't come in yet, so we'll make another trip to your building. So their certificates say, "This certificate is presented to Karen Hummel and Angie Hill in recognition of your outstanding contribution to the achievement of Cogafalls City School District students and the support of Cogafalls City School District staff members."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
There you go. There you go. There you go. Okay, now we're here for the top Tigers. And I've got a bag full of things for each one of our top Tigers. It's a little different, obviously, this year. We're doing elementary on the first board meeting of the month, and we're doing secondary in the second meeting of the month. I generally like to have our elementary kids see our older kids, particularly our seniors, because when you hear the accomplishments of the seniors, it then gives them something to aspire to. But in today's world, you know, we're going to do it this way and do elementary first and secondary next. I think Mr. Wasilko and our team, in terms of community communications, has made contact with all of you to get active permission to take your picture, to be in the ROR, which will be coming out this weekend. Okay? So it'll be put into the false news press, and I believe I previewed it this morning. It's just first names, students, you know, the location, and, like I said, board members. We sought active permission from the parents before we did that. And so if you haven't received that, let me know, and if you change your mind, let me know so that we can get that kind of thing out there. In the students' bags, there are several items. I'm sorry I'm taking so long for an introduction. This is just all brand-new and different for us. Generally, I have the students come up, and the board members are in front of the table. Now, thank you, Ms. Moffett. Generally, you know, the board members shake their hand and give them something in their bag. And so every student gets a bag. An inside bag is a Black Tiger pride bracelet, a Top Tiger Award to Youngs, a certificate to Youngs, a Tiger pin, just like we gave to the staff, a certificate here that Mr. Medkaff will talk about the certificate, what's in the envelope, soon, as I talk more about how this award was derived. And each student then receives a certificate, their certificate, and their nomination form, which is what I'm going to read. Okay? So all of that is located in the student's bag, and they will receive a flower as well. Okay? So what I want the students then to do is just how I had the staff come up as I was reading their nomination form. I want the students to come up, stay away, you know, stay six feet away, but I want you to see the students, and we'll give them their bag. Okay? Is that fair enough? Good? The Top Tiger Award is a board award that is really sponsored by the Cogafalls Foundation and Alumni Association. So how many of you are alum of Cogafalls High School? Raise your hand. Put your hand down if you're a member of the Alumni Association. And if your hand is still up, Mr. Medkaff will be happy to take your money so that you can join the Alumni Association. Mr. Medkaff? Come on up.
Thank you so much. The Cogafalls Schools Foundation started way back in 1983 with one $500 scholarship. Last May, we awarded 72 scholarships worth over $170,000 to our graduating seniors, from one-year up to four-year scholarships. We also awarded six teacher grants worth $500 apiece. So that money also went back into the classroom to help all the students of Cogafalls. Let's see. We also sponsor, in May, we will march in the Memorial Day Parade.
We hope.
Cross our fingers.
We hope.
Unfortunately, this year was canceled. You'll get a beautiful T-shirt that says, "You're a Top Tiger." We help out with class reunions. We have a lovely new website. Go to Cogafalls Schools Foundation Alumni Association or just the initials.org, and please check it out. We had a gentleman who graduated in 1968. He was living out west, I believe in Arizona. He took it upon himself, and he updated everything. He has history of alumni, history of the city school system, and so on and so forth. Right now, he's scanning yearbooks. So if you're looking for information about your specific yearbook and you don't have it, check out our website. In the certificate, you will get a... The letter, you'll get a certificate to Donato's Pizza. So get yourself a personal pan pizza. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, so this is going to be a little tricky, but we'll make it work. We'll make it work. So, you know, I'm going to go a little bit off script and let you guys know that we got great news from the OSCC yesterday, Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. We got the green light to go and start building. And so the Board, the Board is going to pass a resolution tonight, or at least I hope they do. I'm going to recommend the resolution that they passed tonight that takes us from into the expedited local partnership program. Doesn't mean much to you guys, but what it really means is that our $80 million, we get to access our $80 million and hit go on the project. So we'll hire things that'll happen very fast, is hire an architect of record, a construction management team. I'll be working with our finance team along with Ms. Stoykoy, and things will get... Not that they aren't busy already, they're going to get very busy very quickly with regard to that. Now, it's a year, year and a half to two years, just in the planning process, so don't expect to see dirt get turned like tomorrow, okay? But our architects and folks will be meeting with community members, staff members, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of the planning. But that's great news that we got yesterday. Resolution's on the agenda today. We're going to... I got my track shoes on. Let's go. All right? So there you have it. All right. My first, our first Top Tiger is Caitlin Meneski. Where's Caitlin? Come on up, Caitlin. How are you today? Good, good, good. Stay right there. I'm going to read your nomination form, all right? DeWitt is excited to welcome Caitlin as a new student this year. During the online remote lessons, Caitlin is highly engaged and asks pertinent questions regarding the lessons being taught. She exemplifies Black Tiger pride by always being respectful and utilizing newly acquired online skills and etiquette. In her special area classes, as well as her second-grade classroom, Caitlin is positive and encouraging. She works hard and stays focused. She, since returning to school in person, this positive young lady has filled her classroom with joy. She welcomes guests, is a friend to all of her classmates, and continues to be respectful of her teachers. Outside of school, Caitlin loves completing challenging homework and spending time coding her own computer games. DeWitt is lucky to have Caitlin as part of our school. I'll also tell you, Caitlin tells a pretty good joke. Thank you so much, Caitlin. Appreciate it. Whoops. Give me a flower, too. And like I said, this is a little bit strange. Our next Top Tiger is a third-grade student at DeWitt Elementary, Jason Dobson. Okay, if I can find Jason's letter.
Can we help you distribute them?
Yeah. If I can find your Jason's letter. Caitlin, check and make sure I didn't give you Jason's letter, please. Inside your bag, maybe, is Jason's bag right here.
This is Jason's bag right here.
Excellent. You got a flower in it, right? Perfect. Thank you. All right. So if I can find your letter, you'll get a letter, okay? All right. What's that? No, these letters just came up.
Oh, it is.
Did I put it in his paper?
No. No.
All right. Thank you. All right, anyways. Since kindergarten, Jason has demonstrated Black Tiger pride in everything he does at DeWitt Elementary School. Whether it is in music, art, physical education, or the classroom, Jason is always respectful, helpful, and kind to both adults and his peers. He's one of the first students to raise his hand or help a friend in need. He sets a shining example for all students, all classmates. Thank you, Jason. If you find the letter, was it in the letter? Okay, good. All right. Good. Thank you.
Does he get that?
No, he's got one in his bag.
Okay. Thank you.
This is just a black and white copy. There's color copies in the bag. Okay. Our next Top Tiger is a fifth-grade student at Lincoln Elementary. Her name is Megan Gibson. Got a letter? We're all good. All right, good. Come on up, Megan. Megan is a fifth-grade student at Lincoln Elementary, nominated by the specialist team. Not only is Megan a cheerleader for the little, for the Black Tigers, little Black Tigers, she is a cheerleader in our school by representing her Black Tiger pride in many ways. She is responsible, hardworking. She is a responsible and hardworking student who comes to every class with enthusiasm for learning. Megan practices safety, both at school and at home, helping out where needed. Megan is a respectful student, family member, and a great friend to all. Thank you, Megan.
I've got everything for you.
Our next Top Tiger is fourth-grade student at Lincoln Elementary, Caleb Wright. All right, Caleb's not with us tonight. I'll still read his nomination form. The special, the specials team has had the pleasure of watching Caleb grow as a kind and considerate young man. Caleb is always ready and willing to help any student or adult with any task, all the while being sensitive to the feelings of others. Caleb is a hard worker, showing Black Tiger pride through his responsibility, respect, and safe actions. Caleb is always on the lookout to see who needs help, a kind word, or just a pat on the back. So we're very proud of the young man he has become. Our next Top Tiger is a third-grade student at Preston Elementary, Natalie McCann. Hi, Natalie. The Preston team is proud to recognize Natalie McCann for all of her hard work. Natalie has been at Preston since she was a kindergarten student, and she is now a third grader. Natalie has grown each year into a more responsible student. She has made great academic progress and has learned how to use strategies when she gets frustrated to calm down and get back on track. Natalie has a beautiful smile, and we love to see it on the Zoom and in person even more. We can't see it inside your mask, so can't we? Darn it. The Preston family is so proud of Natalie, and we can't wait to see what great things she does next year. It's weird. They usually shake their hand and all that kind of thing. Our next Top Tiger is a third-grade student at Preston Elementary, Isaac Chapman. You look fantastic tonight. The Preston family is proud to nominate Isaac Chapman as one of our top Tigers of this school year. Isaac has been working harder than ever this year, and he isn't letting the challenges of online learning stop him. He completes all of his lessons and comes to all of his Zoom meetings with a smile on his face. Isaac has an amazing way of showing kindness and respect to his classmates and his teachers. It is such a joy to watch Isaac learn and see him excited about all of the great things he is doing. Keep up the great work, Isaac. Our next Top Tiger is a third-grade student at Price Elementary, Mackalen Doherty. Did I get that right? Mackalen? I'd like to nominate Mackalen Doherty, Ms. Henigah, Hagenhauer's, third-grade class. Each day in art class, Mackalen comes ready to learn, shows Black Tiger pride by displaying great behavior, and is eager to participate in her art lessons. Mackalen recently created a wonderful sculpture of a unicorn using objects she found in nature. She did such a great job on her project that it inspired other students. She did such a great job on her project that it inspired other students who saw what she made that they decided to make unicorns of their own. It was such a, it has been such a pleasure to have Makayla in art class, and I look forward to a great year of art making with this awesome top tiger at Price Elementary. Congratulations. Our next top tiger is a first grade student at Price Elementary. His name is Gavin Pfeifer. Hi Gavin. I'd like to nominate Gavin Pfeifer from Mrs. Cat's first grade class to be the Price Elementary Top Tiger for September. Gavin is always excited to come to school and enjoys being active. He loves physical education where he constantly demonstrates Black Tiger pride as a leader in his class. He helps his teammates, shows sports person-ship, and practices safety during class. Gavin has even demonstrated these qualities this year as we have transitioned to remote learning. He raises his hands, interacts with myself and the students in a positive manner. And he, and he encourages his classmates. We're so lucky to have Gavin as part of our Price Elementary team. Congratulations Gavin. Our next top tiger is a fifth grade student at Richardson Elementary, Erin Jacobson. Hi Erin. Our Richardson Top Tiger nominee is a young lady who exhibits so many fine character qualities. Erin Jacobson is a student who is self-motivated, detail-oriented, polite, determined, and helpful to others. In fact, Erin, with her caring heart, has been one of our leading fundraisers for the American Heart Association. Erin consistently goes for her personal best, which is shown by her excellent grades in all subjects. In the many years that we have taught her at Richardson, these characteristics have continued to grow. Congratulations to our Richardson School Top Tiger nominee, Erin Jacobson. Congratulations. Our next top tiger is fifth grade student at Richardson Elementary, Kieran Harrison. Did I say that right, Kieran? Our Richardson Elementary School Top Tiger nominee is a student who has always been well-liked and respected by his peers. His name is Kieran Harrison. He also shows many other fine character qualities. Kieran is upbeat, responsible, respectful, fun, focused, and kind. He does well academically, and we have seen Kieran be so helpful to his younger sister. Congratulations to our Richardson School Top Tiger nominee, Kieran Harrison. Congratulations. Our next top tiger is a first grade student from Silver Lake Elementary, Carly Freeman. Hi Carly. How are you? Good. Carly is one of the most creative and inspirational students I've had the pleasure of working with at school. Above all else, she is also kind to her peers, teachers, and our staff. She has done an amazing job adjusting to learning virtually this school year. She participates in her art Zoom class meetings and is patient with her teachers and understanding with her peers. She goes above and beyond to create artwork outside of what is expected of her at school. It makes me so happy to see the beautiful artwork she creates, which usually is accompanied by a photo of her holding it up with a giant smile and some true Black Tiger pride. Way to go Carly. Congratulations. And our last top tiger is a first grade student at Silver Lake Elementary, Nicola Spanell. Hello. This Silver Lake Black Tiger has taken first grade by storm. We are thrilled to nominate Nicola Spanell as a top tiger for the month of September. At the age of just six years old, Nicola navigates remote learning, remote learning like a pro. He's always prompt and prepared to start morning, start the morning meeting. Additionally, he takes responsibility for completing assignments in Google Classroom and in Mrs. Plegra's, and, and Mrs. Plegra can always count on Nicola to participate respectfully in Zoom classes. It's been a September unlike any other, and this young learner has showed us all at times the, but what Black Tiger pride truly looks like. Great job Nicola. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Bearing with me, I mean, it was kind of different, but thank you. Thank you for coming. Yeah, you can be dismissed if you want. You don't have to stay for the whole board.
Thank you everyone.
You are welcome to.
Congratulations top tigers. Congratulations.
Catherine, I don't know if you're still here, but thank you. I just said, I don't know if you're still here, but thank you. Your help. Yeah, yeah.
Item E, Treasurer CFO's Business Consent Agenda.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve all items in the Treasurer's Consent Agenda.
So moved. Any discussion?
I do, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Forgive me if I didn't email you about this one, but I swear I did it in my head if I didn't regarding the advances to food service. As we close September, and you'll see next meeting when we look at the reports, food service has gone into the negative because we've not received any revenue yet. So, in order to keep us auditor-approved, we just need to make an advance. This is not what we're in the negative of, but this will, this will be a one-time instead of me having to come back every month with like a little bit here and a little bit there. So, that will cover us once we start receiving the revenue, see where we're at. We'll see how much will be advanced. Well, it'll all be advanced back, and if we need to transfer something, we'll do that at that time, at the end of the year. So, in, in my head, I emailed you, but I'm not, I can't remember if I did. And then there was one quick change to the permanent appropriations that I, I received an email yesterday from ODE that there was an error on the fiscal 20. When I'm closing out my grants, I have to do final expenditure reports. And there was an error, and they didn't let us carry over a certain grant. And it was a newer grant, so I thought maybe they weren't letting us carry it over. Well, it was an error. So, they are letting us carry it over. So, last meeting I had taken it off. It's the 536, one of the Title I, non-compete grants that we got last year. And I took it off last meeting, well, now it's back on for the same amount that used to be on there the whole time. So, they let me go back in today and click the button to carry it over, so we'll have that money as well. And then the only other major change there is the, what will be coming up next as part of the resolution, the money we'll receive from Summit County for their COVID that they are distributing to us. And that just is included in the 507. So, those are the major things there.
One quick question, the 034 Private Maintenance Fund, is that the permanent improvement lobby fund?
That is.
So, that would just be in that fund?
Yep. Yeah, so that, yeah. We, right now, because we are, where we're at in the process, all we are paying is auditor fees on that money, so you see very little in that one and in the bond retirement. So, it's just the fees for distributing that money to us right now.
Thank you.
For the expenses.
Um, Mrs. Stoykoy, I, I have a quick question. We've, we've been asked, aren't we getting some reimbursement for serving meals to students either when we're remote or when we're blended? And, and if so, then why are we in the negative category? And I want to make sure I'm really clear about this, that.
Yeah, so I, I know a lot of people think it's an automatic thing, like they're just giving us this money every month to keep solvent. It works exactly the same as it does for our free and reduced students in a, in a normal time, except now it applies to everybody. It applies to all of our students. So, what typically happens is for our free and reduced students, they have to receive that meal. They have to go, if they pack lunch, it, it doesn't count. If they don't, if they aren't there, it doesn't count. They have to go and receive a meal, or in this case for September, pick up meals, or we cannot submit that for reimbursement. So, we can only submit exactly what meals we've sold in a sense, even though we're not charging. That's all we are allowed to get reimbursement for. So, it is important, being, being back in school will be helpful to the Food Service Fund, but I do know that they're still doing the weekly pickups. So, it, it's one of those things, even if you don't really need it, it does help the Food Service Fund, and it gives you something even if you don't want to do anything with it, or you want to donate it somewhere else, whatever it happens after it leaves us and you take it, it's kind of on you. But it, it would definitely, any more reimbursable meals we can get will help. We are, we typically don't receive revenue until October, usually anyway, other than what parents have paid to put on children's accounts. We don't receive many of that federal reimbursement or state reimbursement until October. You know, once we've gotten a good full month and some weeks in from the beginning of the school year. So, we, I know Mr. Bailey submitted that the other day, so we're kind of looking to see where, where we're at. We're going to be getting something, but we're not sure.
And then just one quick follow-up question to that too, just to clarify this. Even though we would get funding for that in those reimbursable meals, it's when we actually sell meals to students and staff that those funds are then used to pay our staff to buy that refrigerator that's not functioning, or the new freezer, or the oven, or to keep all of the food service operations going.
Correct.
So, even though we may get some money for the meals we're passing out, we aren't getting any revenue to pay staff salaries or equipment or any of those items.
Correct. Yes, it's not just the food that comes out of that fund as, as expenses, all the employees, their salaries, their benefits. You know, the food service has office supplies. They have different things like that that are not inclusive of actual food, but are kind of overhead in a sense, if you want to say that, that there is no reimbursement for that.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda for Miss Stoykoy? Roll call please.
Hold on. Dr. Hall?
Yeah.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Item F, Treasurer CFO's Business, Mrs. Kristy Stoykoy.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the County of Summit COVID-19 Public School District reopening grant resolution.
So moved. I'll second. Moved and seconded. Miss Stoykoy, exploration there?
This is a requirement, so Summit County emailed me a couple of weeks ago regarding the money that they are giving to the different Summit County districts. We are going to be receiving $433,000-ish dollars from them. There's some change in that. But it is the same as what our CARES Act funds are, is what it's able to be spent on. So, it's not just, there are certain restrictions in, it has to be COVID-related, it has cleaning, technology, anything that, you know, is different now that you would need because of COVID or because of remote learning is allowable. So, it does carry those same restrictions, which is important to know. But one of their things they need is a resolution. They'd like this resolution by the board and then returned to them, and then they will give us that money. But you can see there's some different, just requirements in here regarding we'll, we'll submit to them what we've been spending because they're still responsible at the end of the day to the federal government for this money. So, they just want to make sure it is being used how it's supposed to because they will end up being the, the ones that do any kind of final reporting for that.
Any questions for Miss Stoykoy on this grant?
It's my understanding that this is the last round of CARES Act 20 that's left out there to anyone that would trickle down to us, so.
Yes, as far as I know.
It's been great while it lasted, but we've hit, hit the end of the road, I think.
Roll call please.
Ms. Moffett? Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Item G, Superintendent CEO Business Consent Agenda.
Thank you, President Schofield, members of the board. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve all items listed in the Superintendent's Business Consent Agenda.
So moved. Removed and seconded. Any discussion on the consent items? Roll call please.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Item H, Superintendent CEO's Business, Dr. Todd Nichols.
Thank you, President Schofield, members of the board. A couple of things. One of the pieces that I want to talk to the board about is return to school. And so, I've had, I had, I reorganized my task force, K, K5 at 6:12 today, and began conversation with them about what our second semester would look like. And I gave them an assignment to collaboratively identify what that might look like for the second semester. And the reason why I gave them that assignment now with a two-week deadline is because we will soon be issuing correspondence to our families to ask them if they want to be option one or option two for second semester, and ask them to make that choice for the second semester so that then we can appropriately staff both option one and option two. So, I would ask the board that if they have any comment about that, go ahead and, you know, share your comment with me tonight. If you have, if you have the opportunity to think about it over the next week or so, please send me independent comment, and we'll be making, we will, we will have to be making a decision here in the, in the near term as to what that's going to look like so that we can share with parents all the information that we have at the time so that they can make an educated decision between option one and option two. So, I would give this opportunity to the board to share anything that you might want to share at this time.
Can I ask a clarified question? Are there two decisions to make, right? One is, what do we do at the end of the four-week period we're in, correct? And then also, what do we do in January when we come back?
Yeah, and Mr. Gomez, quite honestly, the logistics, we're going to have to stay the way we are. the logistics, we're going to have to stay the way we are for the remainder of the semester, because logistically, it, it is really problematic. And let me share with you some of the things that we're running into. So if I brought, if I brought K5 all back now, I'd have some kindergarten classes that are at 28, you know, large, large numbers. And we have advertised for long-term subs as our conversation has taken place here, both not only in kindergarten, but also fourth and fifth grade. The reality is, no one is applying. We've received zero applications for those kinds of situations. And so now I, I, I'm, we're in a dilemma. We're in a dilemma in terms of staffing. We're in a dilemma in terms of scheduling those classes. So you have to think about it as if it's two completely different school districts. And so, you know, the course setups and so on and so forth in option two and option one, you know, those all have to be core setups, class setups. Making those changes right now with the staffing that we have would, would logistically be a nightmare and almost frankly impossible right now. So as much as we've thought about it, and as much as I truly want to bring our K5 kids back full-time, we have some logistical issues that are in our way. Now, if the Board of Education tells me to make it happen, I'll do the best I can to try to make it happen. But I'm also sharing with you the realities of what, what we would have to do. Am I saying that fairly, Ms. McClure?
Independently advertised for long-term subs, well, as working with our subcontractor, Rachel Basinge Associates. They're running into the same problems. Many folks who sub for us have children in school. That's why they're subbing their kids back to school. Well, these families have children not at home, in school. They're not as able to sub, especially in a long-term situation. We're doing okay to sub, let's spot subbing. And we have building subs in each of our homes. But we're, we're scraping by.
And the decisions that I've made up to this point have been to try to limit the number of contacts and therefore then quarantines. I have sitting on my desk right now a phone message from Summit County Public Health that I'm going to have to deal with first thing tomorrow morning. I tried to call them back, didn't get a return call. But, so we're dealing with, we're dealing with those situations. If, let's just look at it, for instance, if, if I have to quarant, if one of our teachers has to be quarantined, where am I going to put the kids? I mean, where are they going to go? I can't put them all into the same classroom. You know, it, it, it won't work out that way. So some of those things are logistical issues that we need a little bit, we need to be able to, we need to be able to handle. And, and, you know, we're, we don't have subs. I mean, people aren't subbing.
Sounds like if we bring the kids back, they'll have the subs.
What's that?
Sounds like if Ms., what Ms. McClure is saying is they can't sub because, they can only spot sub because their kids are home on some days and not on others.
Yes, there are children going to the hospital.
Yeah. I, I would like the data on how many classes would be impacted by bringing them all back together. You mentioned the kindergarten here and there, but I'd, I'd like the data on K5, please.
Okay. Well, you have it. I've given it to you in your packets. You have it.
So really, all of it looks terrific, except for maybe two out of.
I think there's six classes in our elementary buildings that will be over.
We said 18 to 22, right? All along. And so there's about six that are, they're going to be over that capacity.
Because the majority of those in-person classes are much smaller than the online classes when you're looking at the data.
Right.
I mean, there are certainly outliers everywhere.
Yeah.
But overall, those are much smaller. I mean, for people, there's three kids in the classroom when they show up. I know two people that have classes at the high school, they're the only kid on the days they show up. So those, those in-person numbers seem to be pretty reasonable overall, understanding outliers.
Okay.
I think the difficulty, the rock and the hard place are, is obviously we want to be safe and conscientious, because we don't want people to get sick. The other thing is that the reality is, and I'm sure we've all heard it, because I've heard it from a lot of people, is that kids, now that we're blended, are getting less space time with their teacher.
Yeah, it's.
It's just the reality. And that's a hard pill to swallow for families. They're certainly not happy, and I understand why. I understand, oh, it's, stand also that that was going to happen. But it's hard to justify keeping kids and teachers apart if we can keep it safe. So I guess my question to add on to Ms. Schofield's question is if we look at particularly K2 with the Plexiglas and the masks, how does, can we go to Summit County Public Health, say, how do you feel if they're not six feet, but we added these other layers over there?
Oh, well, I know how Summit County Public Health, I mean, we've had those conversations, you know, that Summit County Public Health often has said, we want kids back in school, right? But we want them back in school safely, particularly K5, in the K5 world, right? And the, the flip side of that is that then if someone then runs into some, a positive, then you have contact tracing going on. And we've all defined what contact tracing is. We know what that is. So, um, so those are, I mean, those are the realities of what we're dealing with. And, and like I said, I mean, if, if you as a board want them to come back in four weeks, I, I, our staff's going to have, our, our staff is, our staff's going to have scramble. And, and so, but can we make it happen? Perhaps. I would like to see it at the semester. It's my own opinion, but I'm just one person.
I would certainly be fine with bringing, if things stay as they are, that's the great caveat as well. We don't see things getting worse. Certainly at the semester break, you're fine with K5 coming back. And at minimum, we've got to do full days for six, so we have to balance.
Say that again, please.
At minimum, at least full days on the days they're in for six twelve. We can't have kids in six twelve doing two half-days of K5s doing a full day. That's not going to go over very well. I don't, I can't justify that either.
I don't like it either. We don't like it.
I think at the high school, it's harder, it's perhaps harder to come back full-time at the high school, because there's not as much, there's a lot more kids and in some ways, less space to get them around. So.
Right, right. Yep. Class changes and lunch.
But we got to hit on back in at least the two full days, if that's reality. I can't say blended here, a full here, just that. I could probably say full here if we can feel that. My comfort level is if our staff thinks that we can make it happen and they feel that we can do it safely along with public health, I'm fine with bringing them all back.
Yeah. I don't know that our staff feels that way. That's.
I, that's my question.
That's why I put that out there, because that's important to me as well.
It is to me too. I want to know the staff's position on coming back, because what you had said was the six distance, six-feet distancing will go if we bring them all back.
Yeah, that's, we can't maintain it.
Okay. And I went to OEA, the website, I went to Summit County to see the cases. Actually, we had 254 in Summit County, new cases, one new death yesterday. I don't know. I went, you know, my daughter works at F and General, so she told me they have 19, 20 cases, three on respirators, right, ventilators. And so that worries me. Right now, Ohio, 161,299 cases with almost 5,000 deaths. So I'm worried about that six feet, because now we're learning from CDC that that stuff, whatever you want to call it, stays in the air in a closed room for two hours. So I, and again, how do we clean safely? How do we maintain safety? Do we have proper ventilation? We have old buildings. That worries me. So I want to know those things right up front. I want to know what's happening, but especially the staff. That concerns me. I know that children are not likely to get as sick as the older children, but they can, and they do. I, for me, and again, I'm just speaking for myself, personally, I don't want anybody to get sick with this, because we don't know how it's going to affect their brain, their lungs, their heart down the road when they get older. We don't know. We don't know anything. And as Ms. Moffett said, there is nothing good about this whole situation. I read on OEA, mandatory face mask, strict, strict adherence to six-foot distancing, stringent hand washing, daily health checks for students and staff, yet I think we don't have the temperature taken. Which again, we know is faulty, because you don't necessarily have a temperature when you have COVID. We don't have testing at all, which I was hoping that, you know, Congress would pass to give the schools money, but, you know, we don't know where that is. Strict quarantine and isolation protocols. So I'm very worried. I'm very concerned, because I guess, you know, maybe I am being a little over. I don't know, cautious, whatever. It's just me. I am a worrier. I worry. I don't want to have one person in our school get sick or worse. I don't want to have one person in our community get sick or worse. And we know they don't spread in school necessarily, but it's out there in the community. I want to know the community spread, that percent, which I did not find on the sites. To me, that's really important. How many hospitalizations? How many, you know, I, we, we need to know that stuff.
Well, there's, it's, it's on, there's seven protocols. I mean, the, the, the dashboard that I send to you weekly
Yeah.
has those seven protocols, and those are two of the protocols, is hospitalizations and emergency room visits.
So again, I'm just very, very concerned, very worried about bringing everybody back and not maintaining that six-feet distancing, especially now that we know the particles stay in the air for a couple hours. They don't go away. And we know what happened at the White House. We've seen it. And again, you know, I'm a worrier. If we're going to do this, then I would beg community out there, wear your mask. Help us get these kids back in school by being safe, by maintaining distance. Everywhere you go, wear a mask. Everywhere you go, help us get these kids back in school. And we can all do it together. We need to work as a community and come together to get our kids back in school safely. And that, you know, that's where I am. I'll, I'll let somebody else go.
I have a concern regarding the substitutes, and I know that you folks have probably done everything that you can. But is there a way that we can think outside the box and perhaps do a community, um, community appeal and perhaps do a hiring, you know, fair of some sort? Because I'm sure that we have people with degrees outside the community, and I don't know what has been accepted as far as putting people who can pass security checks with college degrees into the classroom. But where can we think outside the back box to probably draw some other people in for substitute situations? That's a question that I have.
Okay.
There might be people sitting in our community that don't realize they can be a substitute. I don't know. But we probably have a lot of people with a lot of talent in this community. And somehow we need to make the appeal, because I know substitutes are scarce throughout all districts. So what can we do to set us apart that might draw people to us?
People on further to, if you like.
Yeah.
I'm not sure people understand that they don't need a teaching degree to sub.
Right.
Maybe that's something our communications coordinator could put together and get out to the community. I know we have signs advertising for subs, but if I think I need a teaching degree, I may not even apply.
That's a good, good point.
Any other thoughts?
Well, just looking at this, like, from a different direction, I mean, in some ways, it feels as though the faculty members are having to do like twice the amount of work. So I mean, there's obviously other considerations on the other side of that fence, but, I mean, community members are, I'm hearing that as well, is something to consider.
Yeah, in terms of our task force meetings, I don't know that anybody's really feeling like the instruction is of high, of as high quality as we want to deliver. And so that's, that's a problem for them. And, but then also the realities of the other things that I've shared with you also. It, and moving some of the, some of the faculty back from option two to option one, that, that's where I'm getting the semester piece. Based upon what parents want, you know, their selection. Every day, we have people that want to go one way or the other, and we've been pretty strong no on that. Been a couple exceptions, but they've all been as a result of medical situations. So, so no, I appreciate your comments there. And I just, I'm.
Dr. Nichols, I just have another thought. Forgive me for this, but when we have the people working virtually completely, okay, and the teachers can't put them into breakout groups because there is no supervision. Is that an area where we could use, utilize volunteers? I know that we've said we're not really using volunteers a lot this year, but is that an option? I mean, I know that there has to be some kind of supervision. I know that there has to be some kind of accountability, if you will. You know, but the concern is virtual learning brings on a different goat rodeo, if you will. I saw that term and I chuckled, because it presents its own problems.
Speaking of goats.
Forgive me, Christie, you must know what it means. I see that, you know, let's use a little humor, folks, because it's a very stressful time. But we, I, I mean, thinking outside the box might be what some of our staff does the best. And how can we use thinking outside the box to make things, situations better for our students and our parents and our, our staff, you know? That's, throw it to the task force. I'm sure that you will find lots of suggestions when they gather together. Some maybe doable, some maybe not, but as a, as a reading teacher, a language arts teacher, that's where we live. We thought outside the box all day long, you know, and we're reined in by the math and science people that we're fortunate enough to live with, but.
Easy now.
Well, I'm sorry. I'll stop, but it, it's a crucial time. And I think it's difficult for us to provide the kind of learning that we all want to do without making a few changes, because I know how stressed and how many hours some of our people are putting in. And it's not sustainable. I'll, I'll just say it. It's not sustainable.
You're correct. It is not.
Can we look into getting more of those Plexiglas barriers, if that's a help? Or say, I mean, I know we have them K2 now, but people have already said to me, well, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't stop at third grade, you know? So it's a great thing that we have for K2, but to say it as nice as it can, seems a little silly to not have them for other people. Like, if that's a benefit, we should either have them or not. So.
Okay.
It just looks, it, it seems strange that we would only have them for certain grades. If they're beneficial, they're beneficial for everyone. But just to harp on this point again, I do think, and this isn't going against teachers in any way, but I think our ability to deliver high-quality education to students five days a week is compromising the situation we're in right now. And that's not teacher's fault, because that's a decision we made. And that's what's most concerning to me. That's what's most concerning to the parents that have been talking to me. And that's what we've got to work on. I think you've got the safety piece down. I really believe that. I really believe that from where I'm sitting. It's the high-quality education piece that we really got to, we got to figure something out because kids are struggling, staff's struggling, parents are struggling. We're not a good spot.
No, you're, you're absolutely correct. We, we all recognize that. And that was part of our conversation today is how do we make that better and deal with all of the other things that we've already talked about? Okay. Appreciate your comments there. Was asked about, um, parent teacher conferences. And it just so happens we had that conversation yesterday in administrative council. And that, um, we do, the schedule does have, uh, parent teacher conference day, October 22nd. And we're going to continue with parent teacher conference day, October 22nd. And our staff will be here in the buildings for parent teacher conference just as they would have, uh, should we have been in person. The conversation yesterday was, um, while it might not be that night, but 100% of our kids' parents should be checked in with. If it's not already done, then, um, then by the time we get there. And I even made the, you know, comments about certainly those that are, that are struggling. And I was pleased with, uh, my administrators that, um, that said it's not just the kids that are struggling, everybody. So that's really what we had the conversation about. And that's the target. That's the goal. That's the expectation is, you know, that we make communication with all of our families. You know, I know it's unrealistic to do it on October 26th, second, for example. But, um, we certainly don't want to be in a position where we're waiting for somebody to show up. So we go out and schedule it. And that was the conversation. That was the expectation yesterday. And so your, your question to me today was timely, frankly. And we've had this conversation before, uh, you as a board with me, uh, in different settings. So, uh, so that's where we are with that.
Will parents have the opportunity to have a normal, so to speak, conference?
Yes. What I said, what I said to our, um, to our administrators yesterday is if you want to have an in-person con- conference, parent teacher conference, have an in-person parent teacher conference, follow the protocols, so on, so forth. If you want to have a Zoom parent teacher conference, have a Zoom parent teacher conference or whatever, virtual.
Set up to the parent what their preference is?
I would believe so. That's what, that's what my expectation would be, Mr. Gomez. Is that, that's a parent choice. Okay.
I mean, do that?
It's good.
If, if the parents are coming into the classroom, what precautions are taken as far as cleaning? If they're coming in every 15 minutes as they would during the normal?
Have them sit at their child's desk.
That'll work.
If there is one, I mean.
That's not anything that we talked about yet. So I appreciate your asking and we'll figure it out.
All right, thanks.
Okay, levy renewal information, if I may. Go on to that, uh, piece. Uh, we put a lot of, I think you've seen a lot of information recently out. You're starting to see yard signs, issue 36 yard signs. So if anybody in our community would like an issue 36 yard sign, make sure that, uh, make sure that we know. And currently, Mr. Bellby, uh, has most of those yard signs. I think we have 500 of them. Is that correct? Is that the number, 500 yard signs? So, uh, issue 36 is a 7.9 mil, uh, renewal. Currently, the effective rate is 7.25 mils. It generates a little over $5.7 million for us. Uh, was first passed in 2005, then again in 2009, then again in 2014. Uh, that $5.7 million accounts for almost 10% of our general fund budget. And, uh, so if we're talking about the cost or what people currently pay, going off my memory, uh, because of the, uh, homestead exemption rollback, it's about $122 a year. Is that what I said it was? It's on my, it's on my computer. But what's important to know about that is that, um, if for some reason we were not, not successful, the board really would have, we would, as a district, we really would have no choice but to come back with something. We would immediately lose $5.7 million because of collection cycle. So that's immediate loss. But we would have to come back with something. And whatever we come back with then becomes new money. And in 2013, the law changed. And so all new money now is not impacted by that 12 and a half percent homestead exempt, exemption. It doesn't exist any, well, it doesn't exist anymore. Currently, it's paid by the state. It would transition to the, being paid for by the taxpayer.
I could just ask this story quick. If you could come up with something. The one thing I've heard from a lot of people is, I understand it's a renewal. I understand it's $5.7 million. I understand it's 10%. They get all those parts. What they don't understand is what is $5.7 million really buying us in our budget? So if people could have some examples of how many employees that pays for, how many payrolls that they, those examples of what that really means? I think that's the information people have asked me about. Just it helps them put more of a value in what they're getting out of their dollars that they give us.
Let me go back to my number. I said 122. It's $222.03 roughly, um, for a $100,000 valuation. If that 12 and a half percent weren't in play, then it would be 253, 73, um, just on this. But like I said, it would be an immediate loss of 5.7 million. So. Other questions with regard to the levy? Okay, um, I think that covers it for me right now.
But I can tell you right now is that it is. So all of our supplies and all of our capital outlay that come out of general fund only amounts to about 4.1 million. And that's everything. Every supply that's bought, every cust- I mean, custodial office, classroom and any equipment that we purchase. And that includes emergency levy funds. So anything that we've done, um, that, that's where we're at. It's about, it's still under that 5.7 million there. And I, I'll, I'll dig a little deeper on that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols.
You're welcome.
Item I, board business. Item one, OSBA services agreement. It's recommended the Board of Education approve a contract between the Cogal Falls City School District and the Ohio School Boards Association, OSBA, for online policy services. So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, we're just, we had this, um, once before and then we decided to delay it. But this doesn't adopt those policies. It just lets them know that we're chugging along in the process. And the other piece, we had a policy committee meeting two weeks ago. I think it was two weeks ago, um, with Kyle Lathwell from OSBA, who did our policy book. And the reality is the original contract we had with them was just to give us an adoptable policy book. So based on that contract, they've fulfilled that. They've given us an adoptable policy book. So they're looking for the next step. So this would be the next step to adopt this services agreement, which would also includes them putting everything online for us when that time comes and gets us in line because they have a number of districts adopting right now. And certainly with that much material, takes them time to get that all configured into an online process. So that's what they're looking for with this. Also an opportunity for us to touch base with all of you to see where you're at and where an adoption timeline might be. Because that was the other question that we promised to pose.
In our previous talks, we thought that we would, um, take a look at the end of the year. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
If that's all right with the rest of the board, that's what I would appreciate.
Have we provided Dr. Hall with a copy of that link to the board policies yet?
I E., have you been reading policy yet?
I have not been reading policy yet.
Well, heaven help you. There's 800 pages, so we need to get that to you as soon as possible.
I think, Mr. Gomez, we said the end of this calendar year. So I think that's still.
We just wanted to clarify that. So we're going to be looking at our second meeting in December.
That sounds fine.
Is everybody still good with that? And then, oh, um, in regards to questions and how it's going with people, because what we can't do on the second meeting in December is pass a bunch of amendments to the policies because that's going to be, one, labor is for us all and two, confusing for them. So where are people at in terms of comprehension? In terms of things they'd like to see be different? And how can we help you with that part of it if that's part of your reading?
As you know, I've been taking notes. And I will pass along those that concern me that may need to be tweaked regarding a few things. But I haven't finished my reading yet.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Item two, OFCC expedited local partnership program participation. Whereas the Board of Education of the Cogal Falls City School District, school district in quotations, Summit County, Ohio, met in regular session on October 7th, 2020 and adopted the following resolution. And whereas the school district intends to participate in the expedited local partnership program as outlined in Senate Bill 272. And whereas the school district is planning to expend local resources to achieve a separate and distinct part of an overall master facilities plan of the school district's facility needs as prepared in conjunction with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, quotations, commission, that is either new construction or major repairs. And whereas the school district board moved forward with and passed a ballot issue for local resources in November of 2019. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Cogal Falls City School District, Summit County, Ohio, that the board district declares its intention to participate in the expedited local partnership program.
I'll move.
I'll second. I moved and seconded. Dr. Nichols, comments?
Yeah, I made some earlier, uh, today. But a letter that will be coming out to our community is, in a year that's been anything but normal, it's been difficult to find moments to celebrate. However, for Cogal Falls, a truly defining moment happened yesterday. One that will impact all of us positively for generations to come. As you may recall, voters approved the district's first phase of its master facilities plan, a 9.83 mil tax issue in 2019. The plan includes 5.33 mil 36-year bond issue that will ju- that will generate about 80.6 million dollars for a building project costing 113.8 million dollars. The state through the OFCC will pay the remaining 33.2 million of the cost. To date, the payment was to be through its classroom facilities assistance program. However, in July 2020, we were informed that CFAP funds were frozen due to a reduction of state funds driven by COVID-19. In earlier summer, our district reached out to OFCC to request a transition from the CFAP to a different fund, different program, expedited local partnership program or ALP, which would allow us to, uh, immediately access our levy funds. Yesterday, I received word from the OFCC that our request had been approved. At our October 7th Board of Education meeting, the board was asked to approve the OFCC decision, forget, uh, proceed in the process of selecting an architect of record, a construction management team at risk, and to begin the design phase, which would take approximately 18 months to two years. Construction then is anticipated to begin in 2023. Uh, I will tell you that I have a phone conference with TDA tomorrow with Cheryl and Chris. And, uh, so we, as I mentioned earlier today, begin the process of identifying a timeline. Uh, I will also be, uh, on the phone with Kent Cashel from, uh, from RBC, Rick Manilov, and, uh, and, and Mike.
Nina.
Send signal. Thank you. To begin that timeline on the, on the, uh, finance, financing portion of it as well. So those are the things that are taking place. And, uh, that's where we are with it. Are there any questions?
I, oh, two, I suppose. First, are we required to take bids for architect of record? I know that in the CFAP you had to because of this negotiation.
I don't believe so. In my conversation with Bill Prentissel yesterday, he was pretty much get a, get in touch with Chris Smith from TDA and get things started.
And then we would take.
If you guys would choose to do that, you're still going to formally have.
I was planning these, but it's my, for my, for my. And then would we take bids or proposals for construction manager?
I think the process is exactly the same. First you do the architect and then you do construction management.
I would just like to say, when we get to that point, I would hope that we do it similar to what we did when we picked our designer, architect and, and let us interview the people and kind of field them out and get some hair.
Okay. So I'm hearing from you that you want to go through the bid process.
Oh, we have to. I don't know what this is. I don't know that part as much because we haven't made it to that part before. So that, that's new.
Right. And I will be on the phone with, uh, Bill Prentissel as well to, you know, confirm, deny, um, those statements that we just made in terms of architect of record and construction management.
Thrill.
Huh?
Thrill. It's the best part of the year.
Yeah.
The one redeeming part of 2024.
Oh, me too. Good news. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye. Item three, policy first read. We have chapter eight fiscal management policy 8.17, credit card policy. Ms. Stoichkaya, would you like to speak on this, please?
Yeah. So this is exactly what you will, what you've read. If you, or if you haven't read it, what you will read in the OSBA policy. But since we're delaying it, it's important for us to get this on because that's, this is what we're actually doing. This is our practice right now. So we're just going to get that on now under Pipple. And then it's the exact same wording you will see in OSBA.
So no action on this item? And Dr. Hall, we usually have an opportunity to review the policy at one meeting and it'll appear on our next agenda to vote then.
Can I ask one more question while we're on policy stuff? Would you all prefer that we bring the whole manual back for a formal first read again at the first meeting in December? Or do you feel like we've met that obligation by doing it previously? That was the other thing we told Kyle. We didn't ask. So while we're on.
Ask again, please.
Do you want us to bring it back again for a formal first read? Which would be the first meeting in December? Technically, we already did it, but it's so delayed. We, we serve at your pleasure on that.
Well, since we have a new board member, why don't we do that?
It just gives notice to the community, I suppose. We'll do that the first meeting in December.
Item four, Board of Education Administration Book Study. Mr. Hutch, you ready for magic?
Right there.
Perfect.
All right.
So tonight begins our Board of Education Administration Book Study Report Out. So our task was to engage in professional development through participation in a collaborative book study, Board of Education members and administrators. The purpose of this task was to inform our practices, our decision-making, and impact our practice in order to positively impact student achievement as we continue to work toward realizing our vision and mission. Our vision, Cogge Falls City School District, the hub of our community, committed to a culture of caring. We innovate, we create, we personalize education for all. And our mission, every student, every day, every opportunity. This quote, "Not all readers are leaders, but all leaders are readers." Harry Truman. So first, Mr. Joe Bagatti and I would like to thank the members of our reading team, Mrs. Amanda Wyckoff from Elizabeth Price, the principal there, Mrs. Julie Hall, the principal of Richardson, Mr. Chris Geier, principal of Roberts Middle School, Mrs. Julie Leeson, the coordinator of Gifted Services, and Mr. Jason Smith, Cogge Falls High School Associate Principal. Joined Mr. Bagatti and myself to review the responses from over 30 administrators and Board of Education members on the first reading assignment. So to launch us, I'll read the first question, and Mr. Bagatti will share the consensus our reading group reached as we discussed this first reading. So identify what you believe to be two key ideas from this month's reading assignment. And, Mr. Bagatti, you want to share one of those?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Core practices must be identified, clarified, and become common practices. Everybody felt like this was extremely important, so everybody knew what path we were going to be going down, and we all were able to be held accountable for these core practices.
Thank you. There were two key ideas in this question, the second one, focusing on the three elements of what we teach, how we teach, and authentic literacy with accountability has more impact than all other initiatives combined, and the importance of simplicity, clarity, and priority. Our reading group identified the fact that multiple times respondents focused on those three elements as a key idea, and the other key piece was simplicity, clarity, and priority. That was evident in almost every response. Our second question, what did you read that reinforced your thinking or beliefs? Mr. Bagatti?
This, this answer was stressed very, very often. We overcomplicate, there's too much clutter, we need authenticity across the disciplines, and focus on less and accomplish more. This was, as I said, talked about in great detail, about doing less and doing it better. They felt like would be more important and benefit our students much more.
Thank you. Item three, number three, what did you read that challenged your thinking beliefs? We need to find a way to get back to the basics, don't get caught up in the trends. They wanted to reiterate that focus on the three elements. That kept coming back over and over and over again. Quality curriculum, sound instructional practice, and authentic literacy. We probably could have used that answer for almost every question because we had discussion emphasizing those three elements as we explored each of those questions. But basically, get back to the basics and not, not get caught up in the trends. Number four, state a new learning. Mr. Bagatti?
Once again, focus on these three elements. They talked about, we talked about what we teach, how we teach, authentic literacy. Master these first with collective accountability. That was also extremely important, as I mentioned earlier. Accountability would be very, very important. You get what you inspect.
And number five, how can we use this information to inform our work on behalf of our school community and the students we serve? We all have to get better at identifying the most simple and most effective practices in teaching and learning. Limiting our arrows will make it easier to align them. I think they were collectively interested in finding ways that we can impact student achievement by implementing those three elements, really taking a close look at our curriculum, really taking a close look at our instructional practices, and cannot emphasize enough, authentic, and that is a key word, authentic literacy. Again, I'd like to thank our reading group, and I'd like to thank my, my co-leader, Mr. Bagatti, for what was an absolutely outstanding discussion of the first section of this book. Very thoughtful. Folks really reviewed all of the responses from their colleagues, really gave thought to how they could best succinctly summarize over 30 people's points of view. I was extremely impressed. It was a, it was a great experience to have us come together to do this, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my new hero, Mr. Ryan Hutch, who, in the 11th hour, as I'm waiting for my Zoom meeting to begin, nothing happens, and I am, and people are calling me on the phone and emailing me, and don't you know, the guy came to my house.
Oh, my gosh.
Came to my house, set up the Zoom meeting for me, and away we went. So it was, it was fabulous. So he is my new hero. But, Mr. Bagatti, any final comments before we open it up to the board?
Yes, I'd just like to say, speaking on the behalf of my team members, we would like to thank Ms. Schofield for her leadership. It was extremely important. She helped us get through this. She made us think about what we were writing down on paper, and we're all very thankful for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagatti. So, board members, we've all had a chance to read the first reading assignment. I feel your pain, girl. And how about, how about some comments from you? I know you recorded them on the spreadsheet, but as you see how the Reading Group One collectively summarized the thinking of, of over 30 people, any reactions?
I have a question. So I know that you've set that document for all of us. Did all the other administrators get that via email as well?
They did not.
Okay. So we need to make sure we do that, too. The other question I have is, since Mr. Hutch and I are up next month, how did you go about, what was the process for going about getting everyone together? How did you do that? We can steal your good ideas.
Well, just sent out a, again, Mr. Hutch arranged for, through Neonet, to have a Zoom account, and I sent out an invitation for a Zoom meeting. I first checked with Dr. Nichols to find out when there was a window of time or there wasn't a meeting, and there was a window from 11 to 12, so that's when we set the meeting. And everybody tuned on on time except for me. Everybody patiently waited, and then we just began working through the Bagatti questions. So it went extremely well. Once we got over that my own technology snafu, it really went well. I can't, I can't express, really, how thoughtful people were in their responses. This, this really is a, it truly is an excellent professional development opportunity for all of us to participate in together. Dr. Hall, I'm interested in your thoughts as our newest board member. Your reactions just to this process?
To the process of the book study?
Yes.
I think it's really effective. I mean, involving these many, this many people in the, in the group, I think it's great. Reading new material is always helpful, you know?
Great. Thank you for your thoughts. Any final comments, and we'll move off this agenda item. Again, thank you to 30-some people who recorded your responses for us to review. Thank you to Mr. Hutch for your technology expertise, and my co-group leader, Mr. Bagatti. Always a pleasure to work with you, so thank you.
Ms. Schofield, so we left Mr. Gomez in on one more secret that can help this process a little better. So, so our leader had the foresight to give each of us one of the questions, and as we answered and collected the data, we brought that data back to the, to the team, and we discussed it. So I think that was extremely important, that we all had a question to report on. Essentially, that's what we did, and I think that was very effective.
Thank you.
Good? Thank you.
There you go. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to say with question number one, two key ideas, and I took it from the intro, page two, paragraph one, "Large amounts of purposeful reading and writing in every discipline." And we talked about writing across the curriculum, which is very important to me. Also, I pulled on page three, "That reading, writing, and discussion must pervade the disciplines." And to me, that's very important, I thought, as well, to go by. I think that was chapter one, page nine, paragraph one. Reinforced not to teach to a test, but to keep to the best practices, that we know work and not worry about the test. And I think that was good. I do, too. Interestingly enough, this is what I marked on, just what you read with my big red. So it's my big idea that Patty just read, so it's, it's spot on. Thank you. Final thoughts, or we're moving into executive session?
I love this book because I think it, it sings to the heart of what teachers need to do to be most effective in the classroom, and especially in the field of language arts. Why does this resonate? Because I know that we spent the majority of time integrating curriculum, so that math, science, and social studies were also part of the language arts program. And I think the, the boundaries have been in place for so long, it's time for us to break down those barriers and help other people realize that reading is universal. And if you can find the right books and the authentic projects, kids excel. If you, if you look at areas where kids excel, it is basically in authentic learning.
Content areas, absolutely.
If you really bring it home to them, they will read even if they aren't readers.
Exactly right.
Because it's something that they're passionate about. So I think that's what he's talking about. The more I read, the more excited I get.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm not going back into the teaching field, but I really think that he is right on target. It's back to the kindergarten curriculum, where you implement authentic learning and you integrate the curriculum.
Amen, sister.
And you find your sources.
Amen. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, just this bit about what teachers want. He talks about focusing on what works and making sure that that's evidence-based and in order to demonstrate its effectiveness. So that's what's, that's the part that's evidence-based. The other thing he says is to quit pedagogical fads, and I'd love to know what some of the staff members or faculty members think are some pedagogical fads that we could shed. I'm just curious.
Good follow-up question. Thank you. All righty, we're moving into J then, and thank you again for your comments.
We got five, six, and seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Five, six, and seven. We aren't even ready for J. Future agenda items. Okay, committee reports. Alliance for School and Community Growth, Mrs. Moffett?
We shall be meeting next Tuesday.
Thank you. Athletics and Activity Council, Dr. Hall?
It was canceled.
Board Policy, Ms. White and Mr. Gomez. Business Advisory Council, Ms. White and Dr. Hall.
I believe we are meeting November 23rd at 8:00 AM.
Financial Advisory Committee, Dr. Hall?
We have this on the calendar now for next week?
Monday at 11:30.
Thank you. Foundation and Alumni Association, Mr. Gomez?
We meet Tuesday.
Ready. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Gomez?
The only thing I would add is that the election's in full swing. Early voting started yesterday. Ask people to think about education as they make their choices this fall.
Thank you. Student Achievement Liaison, they do have a couple of things to report. One, you know that the third grade fall testing English Language Arts is required. The state did extend the testing week by one week, October 19th through November 6th now, so there's a bigger window of time in which to test our third graders. Two other pieces, the district leadership team had its first meeting of the year on Monday, October 5th, and I can tie into that our student wellness and success, since that was the focus of the district leadership team meeting. So the focus of the district leadership team meeting was on the Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity. The building leadership teams, as you know, along with their building principals, participated in day one of a three-day workshop. As a follow-up, they all read within Cornerstone One, Modules 1, 2, and 3, and I think we need to get you the links on that, too, Dr. Hall.
Thank you.
And then they reviewed an extensive list of what's called identity development resources. The building leadership teams then decided on a resource that they felt fit them the best to inform them as they moved forward on identity development, and they selected books that have been ordered for them, and different ones for each building. They made a commitment to collectively, as a BLT, read that resource and use it as a guide to start to share with staff when this begins in the second semester. Each building also began to develop an ICS equity plan, and the equity plan for their school focused right now on those first three modules that we learned about in the first day of training. So Module 1 is the history of marginalization. Module, Module 2 is a shift from deficit to asset-based thinking, and Module 3 is equity begins with us, identity development for systems change. So they are starting to put together a plan for their own school on those three modules, on how they will launch this with the staff, again, not until after the first of the year, because this month there is another day-long training, and next month there's another day-long training, and they will continue to add to their equity plan. It's very, it's a very organized format, so as they learn about a particular element of equity, they then work as a BLT to incorporate that into their plan. So we heard various reports from buildings on how they were doing with their plan, the resources that they chose, on their identity development, and they were given assurance that they would have an opportunity to use, I think, one of the early release days each month with their staff in order to review and have the conversations about this information. So it was a kind of a combination student wellness and success DLT meeting, so I'm reporting on both of those simultaneously. If you have any other additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, we're ready for comments. Oh, look, and tonight it started... Oh, look, and tonight it starts with me. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank our Kaiba Falls High School Student Council for their supply drive on Sunday, September twentieth. I know some board members were there contributing items, too, and we thank you for that. I'd also like to thank Summit County Council and County Executive Eileen Shapiro for granting the school districts the funds from, that they received from the CARES Act. We need every dime. We need every single dime, and we're grateful for her taking the initiative to provide that to the schools in the county. And then finally, the fall theater production. Shakespeare's Much Ado About Nothing will be livestreamed this Saturday at two o'clock and six o'clock, and Sunday at two o'clock. Get your virtual tickets online, and we look forward to a great performance. I've seen the kids rehearsing out on the front lawn for a while now, so I'm looking forward to that. Let's move to Patrice.
That's okay, you already took mine.
Did I? See what happens? That's why we rotate this.
I'm just gonna double with the play.
All right. Mr. Gomez?
I'm, uh, Britowski. I hope I'm pronouncing her last name right. It was in Acrobican Journalism. I'm a great student, so I wanted to give her a shout-out, how proud we are that one of our own was in there. And then the PTSA here at the high school is having a fundraiser this coming Tuesday, just to let everyone know. It's from five-thirty to seven in the back lot here, and they're selling cotton candy, but it's not just any cotton candy. There's a local company that makes strange but good flavors of cotton candy, and they'll be selling that Tuesday, five-thirty to seven here at the high school in the back lot.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Dr. Hall?
I want to thank Mrs. Walter and Mr. Meyer at Bullock for taking me and Ms. Schofield around as part of my tour of all of our buildings to get up and running here. And also Mr. Geier at Roberts, if I didn't do that the last time, because I also got to visit there. Those were both great tours and really illuminating in a good way. I also got some moms from the parent group at Lincoln, and they look great. My mom in Monroe Falls, she got two also, and they also look great. And also, and I didn't bring the book, but I just wanted to mention, I think I showed to you guys already, I did finish this book by Follen called The Governance Core. It's a really great book. I'm really, I'm happy I took the time with it. I recommend everybody check it out. A lot of the things that it mentions great school boards do, great teams of school boards and administrators do, things that are already being done here from what I'm seeing. One thing that stood out to me, probably just because I'm new here, is he suggested that we not speak in acronyms. That would be helpful to myself and to the community if you try to think about it. But, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. And last, but certainly not least, Mrs. Moffett?
I would like to thank, because we didn't do it during our meeting at this point, all the people who made the donations. There were a considerable number of very lovely donations made by community members, so we'd like to publicly thank them for that. Also, I would like everyone to know that if you have an opportunity to purchase moms from Lincoln next year, they do indeed have the loan fundraiser. They are so huge. I was asked by my husband to remove it from in front of our drop-in mailbox because he said the postman has to lean over to get the mail into our box. So, I mean, they're that big and they are that beautiful. They're quite lovely.
They took the plastic off and they go.
Indeed, and I think that, oh, I think, I think all of the others were taken.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Moffett.
Thank you.
Before we go to executive session, I'd like to make the motion we take a ten-minute recess. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Quick roll call, Ms. Stoyk, please.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Adam J., Executive Session. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, it is hereby moved that the Board adjourn to executive session to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Roll call.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Item K, executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1. It is hereby moved at the Board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee or official of the school district.
Second.
Thank you Ms. White. Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt.
Aye.
I'm going to go with Ms. White.
Ms. Schofield.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hoff.[1112.86]
Executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1. It is hereby moved at the Board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee or official of the school district.
Second.
Moved and seconded any discussion. Roll call.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Gomez.
Aye.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Ms. Moffett.
Aye.
Ms. Stoffel.
Just give us a few minutes. (inaudible)
Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Moffitt?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
There's never discussion on a motion to adjourn now. And it's Robert's rules of order. Yes. It is.
I know, I know.
It is. Yeah, just trying to explain things along the way.